Evening ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to Glen County Commission District Two Town Hall Meeting, featuring the first presentation of suggested Splosh projects from District Two. My name is Cap Fendig. I'm the District Commissioner here for the Island. I want to welcome my other fellow Commissioners here. I'll let them stand up and introduce themselves.
Walter Rafalski, I'm at Large, Coach Two.
Bill Brunson, District Four.
Okay. And I'm really excited and happy to introduce regularly now our new County Manager. I'll let him stand up and introduce himself.
Alright, thank you sir. Bill Fallon, County Manager for almost a month now. So, still in the deep end. I tell everybody my toes are almost touching, but I'm getting there. Been an Island resident for the last 10 years, so it's a fantastic, fantastic place to live. So, good to meet everybody, thank you.
Mike Stewart's not here. He was our interim manager. He did a great job coming in. You know, it was a long process for us to finally find the right guy, and I think we have, and I'm excited about the opportunity to go forward. So, little things about tonight's meeting. I'm hosting this meeting because, A, the county is considering putting a Splosh up before you, the voters, and we have to decide on those projects. This list that I'm presenting tonight comes from a variety of sources. It comes from you citizens who have called me, told me of your issues. It comes from county staff who are out there working in the field every day, feedback from them. It comes from my preparation to be elected to this office, which I spent about two years of due diligence. This is the third term that I've had the privilege to serve Glen County. The past, I served in 2008. As an at-large Commissioner, and this time I wanted to come back and specifically serve St. Simon's because it's the love of my heart. My family's been here since the mid-1800s, very large family, and I grew up on a long list of grandmothers and great-grandfathers and aunts and uncles that were highly active in public service. So, my passion is extra duly fueled by the passing on of the genetic energy to do this job. So, I'm excited to be back up here tonight and go through this list. We're going to go through this list. Dave Austin, most of these projects are Public Works. Lisa Gorganis, some of our other staff is here. If you would just stand up and introduce yourselves, so everybody can know who you are.
Resident Town, Chairman of the Board of Social and Cultural Affairs.
Lisa Gorganis, Recreation and Forest Director.
Mr. Hagan, Assistant County Manager.
Dave Austin, Public Works.
Hannah Lawson, Communications Director.
Okay. I don't see any other County staff here. So, we'll get going with this meeting. The format of this meeting is to go through a PowerPoint presentation, finish that, and then whatever time we have, it's an open floor comment. I will ask that you confine your comments to the Splosh projects, or Splosh in general. I will have three more Town Hall Meetings that'll just be listening sessions to hear about Splosh, as those list develop and your feedback. So, that is the format that I'm asking. I'm also asking that, I've learned being back up in here, we also have a very passionate crowd, so just mind your manners and your dignity up here. We're all here for a common purpose, and that is to do what's good that we can for our neighborhood, for our community, and for those around us. Fair enough? Alright Dave, you want to come up to? I'll turn it over to you, and I'll comment between. Alright, well, up in front of us tonight, you see what is Splosh, and what does a penny Splosh do in the sales tax?
Can you adjust that, please?
A little blurry there, alright. Well, the board, I don't know if he can adjust that or not with the screen down, but this is the record of the Board of Education penny tax that they have. So, you can see that year-to-date, they've raised $28 million. Dave, if you'll flip the channel, you got the look of there. And, um, let's see, last one was, go back, was 28 million, and to date here, I'm sorry, is 23 million, with a couple more months to go in fiscal idea. That kind of gives you an idea of what Splosh, penny Splosh brings in. Of course, as we all know, up until soon, we've had a very economic thriving county. My experience living here all of my life is from the 70s and the 08s, is that Glen County's gone farewell. We have a good mix, population, interstate, and commerce, and industry, so we don't know what's ahead, but I don't think the punishment, if it occurs, will be lasting too long. But that gives you an idea of what the Board of Education has been raising with their, so you know the kind of numbers we're talking about. Alright Dave? Alright, this first picture is Mallory Park. You see three baseball fields. This is in the sketch because there is a nonprofit group that's been working with the county to try to look at a revamp of the ballfields at Mallory Park. That would be totally financed by that group, so this is not a part of the discussion. What is a discussion is, for me, is expansion of parking for the village. And Dave has laid that out. We're looking on the right here is going north. Here, on this side here is along Mallory Street. So, you can get an idea of how much parking they have. Parking is a problem in the village, always has been, but it's increasing now, pressure. So, the goal is to get close to walking parking, and this is an area that we can do it. And of course, on the other side of the street are the tennis courts and the pickleball courts. Alright?
Get that perspective, which way is the ocean?
Ocean is this way.
Going back this way.
Okay, Episcopal Church is right over here.
Okay.
This is, this area right here is an unopened right-of-way. It's nothing but trees right now, pine trees mainly.
Ditch and a water tower, used to be there.
Yeah, water tower right there.
Okay. Alright, next is Demery Park. This is kind of an overview of Demery Park. I'm sure most of you know where it's at. It's a large ballfield, it's a soccer field, lot of activity. Lisa, you want to elaborate a little further on what goes on in that park? Yeah, I'm not going to leave you out. Yeah, come on up. Everybody needs to know Lisa Gorganis, runs our recreation.
Yes, so thanks Commissioner. So, Demery Park is used for, use soccer, use football, baseball, softball, T-ball, all those things we play there. We also play at Mallory Park, and this is one of our very important fields. Also at Demery Park, we have a playground, there's a community garden that's maintained by the Island Garden Club, and a skate park in that facility. Couple years ago, the restroom community building at this park was removed because it was, it reached its lifespan, and so it was taken down. And funds were considered to replace it, but the cost was pretty high. So, this park, currently when we have activities, which is at least six or seven, eight months out of the year for athletic activities on the fields, there's currently no restroom facilities, and we put portlets out.
And we can have a couple hundred people in that park on any given activity?
Yes, sir.
Alright. So, yeah, so when I actually came on the commission, there were no porta-polits out there, and I went out to a soccer game just to watch, see what was going on, and I was appalled with 200 folks out there and kids, there was no place to go to the bathroom. So, at that moment, the only thing I could quickly do was expedite some porta-poly out there for the property. But our recommendation is to come back and build a, there used to be a pavilion structure and restrooms out there to service that park. Okay. Alright, one of the most well-known projects of the last few years is the implementation of pickleball courts and the transitional use of tennis courts here. And of course, that was pretty acrimonious and has been, but I got these two groups together over the course of the year, and especially recently, and sat down with them and went through some of the issues they were both having, and had them come forth with documentation of their enrollment and membership. Both the tennis and the pickleball are growing very rapidly. That really reflects an activity that's changing in our island in the sense that our demographics of Island populations is getting older. And, you know, pickleball is here to stay. People don't believe that, but I can tell you that when I grew up, and I played in this park, see Mike Hoggan over here, we played, growing up, boys, you had football and you had baseball. Whoever heard of soccer? And through the years, soccer caught on as a sport, and you can see the investment that the county has made at North Glen Recreation Parks, huge soccer program. So, pickleball is heading in that direction. It's nationally moving that way. If you study the statistics, it's something you can't argue against, but it is, what are we going to do with? So, I got the two groups together, and they all came to an accord and a peace. So, I'm recommending in Splosh, need of additional pickleball courts and tennis courts in that location. Okay? Another problem that I get a lot of phone calls from and complaints, both from county staff, from citizens, and my own observations, one of the first things we did as Commissioners, we went out there and paved that parking lot and got the parking in order, so that at least most of it is organized parking, instead of blocked and flipped, it cleaned it up. But I get a lot of complaints about people peeing and pooping in the water, in the dunes, defecating. So, you know, for me, a worthy investment is to have a single restroom facility put in at that location. And, you know, I understand, you go to the beach, we don't have that many entries to the beach, and Gould Inland is one of them. It's a major visitation place. I want to point out that the plan and talking with Public Works is we would totally shield it from the neighborhood and really the parking lots, so you would only see it through the hedges coming up from there. So, a project that I've asked staff to look at and design and cost would be a one-hole bathroom facility there. Postel Creek, East Beach, if you've known that kayaking has really grown to be a huge recreational activity on the island. This is at East Beach, the bridge at East Beach, if you don't know the name of that creek. And both the rental companies and individual citizens, everybody pulls up and launches there, and it's really a bad launching spot as far as facility-wise. There's orchards, it's mud, it's a problem, so I'm recommending that the staff get together, I've met with DNR about this, they're excited about this project, to do some improvements and kind of make it safer and more accessible. You still have to learn what low tide and high tide is there. I get those calls. "I'm stuck in the middle of the creek." It's low tide, even in a kayak, so. Alright, and a very important project here, of course, this picture is you're looking at the west side of Sea Island Road going north to Frederica. We recently ditched that project because it has a lot of standing water, it's a problem with mosquitoes. It was a deep ditch, we had people that have had car wrecks. Thank God, nobody has died or drowned, but there've been cars that have turned over and rolled into that ditch. So, we piped the first section and put sidewalks. I've been working with Ben Slade and a lot of the bicycle groups, bicycling and walking paths is an important part for me at St. Simon's. So, our goal is to sidewalk north from Hamilton to Arthurmore Drive in this first phase. We're also looking at how we would set that, but right now, it would be somewhere in that area, either on top of the ditch after it's paved, or we've had some conversations with Atworth, more wider away on the property. I did meet with DNR several times, and I talked about the future, because I look, I've lived here a long time. I looked for the future of what St. Simon's is, and we had a lot of discussions about widening of Sea Island Road and the possibilities of doing that. I'm pleased to say that with those meetings, the DNR didn't find really any contentious issues towards working at some time in the future towards arranging that. So, when we lay bike and walking path infrastructure, we're keeping in mind that widening possibility 20, 30 years. Hopefully, it's longer. Alright, as you see, I'm focusing on sidewalks in this section. Harrington has become very populated. It's not where I used to hunt when there wasn't anybody out there, except Alfonso and a few of the old timers, and I would hunt out there. But now, it's very populated areas, you know, it's become densely populated, and a lot of families and a lot of young kids out there, and we need sidewalks. It was interesting, a lot of pictures, and you can see mom and the young girl biking, going down to Village Creek. Everybody likes to ride down to Village Creek, feel that afternoon breeze, look at the sunrise or the day, so we'll be looking to have sidewalks as part of Splosh to put in there. Alright, another sidewalk project. Of course, now we've completed the road transformation at Fort Frederica and Christ Church, which I have to say, being in the trolley business, is nice and safe for my guests now and for traffic. They're no longer exposed walking across the traffic that comes from that end. There are a lot, again, a lot of growth. As you know, the last couple of years, our permits have been off the charts and buildings going on. Only problem slowing it down right now is lack of construction workers and lack of windows and other building materials. So, we would, we have a great sidewalk system out there. When I was Commissioner last time, I had the privilege to be a part of running the sidewalk up Frederica, all the way to Lawrence Road out to the north end. And this is a leg that runs now up to the church. We want to complete that little leg up to, there's a bridge to the north, to the north up there, to allow those neighborhoods to tap into the opportunity of bike riding. Ocean Boulevard sidewalk needs widening. The traffic, again, because of short-term rentals, has really increased. Dave, you pointed down where you did the improvements. Widening the sidewalks, we want to continue that on down to Arnold Road, up to the Crab Trap and that area where it connects to East Beach. So, since I came on the commission, I had a lot of meetings last year with all the property owners and business owners on Arnold Road. I get the calls and complaints from citizens, again, with residential growth, short-term rentals, everybody lives over in the houses and short-term rentals back over towards the ballpark and on Mallory, all down the west side of Demery Road. This is their entrance point to get to the beach, and it's narrow as it is, the businesses are narrow, and so everybody's piling in the roads, so it's a traffic jam. I challenge you to go down there, if you haven't, any morning, any weekend, in the mornings and afternoons. Now, the restaurants opened up down there, it's doubly crowded. So, I have met with all the property owners, and they agreed to consenting to see a sidewalk put in that will connect out to Arnold Road and allow people to go down to Massengale Park or on out. A lot of people don't know, there's a beach exit north side of the King and Prince. So, it's a problem, and of course, you know, there's so much traffic in there. We made a four-way stop and put a traffic light up at that intersection for the people going back and forth to the restaurants. People like to walk, and of course, parking's a problem, so more so, all the rental cottages all down there, all that way, a large volumes of people are walking on our sidewalks and walking in the roads. Okay?
Captain, does that have anything to do with Arnold Road itself, or is it just a sidewalk?
I'm, okay.
Is it widened or driven in with Arnold Road?
Alright, I can't widen it, it's the businesses are going to give up some space on their right-of-way to put the sidewalk now. Very, very small. Yeah, just a sidewalk. There were some discussions about one-way, traffic back and forth. A lot of, a lot of people were for it. I did that due diligence last year, and a lot of people were against it, so the best thing that we all agree was something needed to be done, and everybody came to the consensus of getting a sidewalk. Okay. Another big request that I get, of course, is in Sandcastle, and if you know anything about Sandcastle, it has a cut-through into King's Terrace. I used to ride through that cut-through as a kid before Sandcastle was built. Lot of business in there, a lot of people actually are riding their bikes to work to avoid traffic. So, we're recommending that a sidewalk be put in off of Demery, down the side of Sky Lane, allowing the residents and businesses of Sandcastle to be able to bike in and in off of Demery. Hamilton sidewalk, our goal in the previous commission, I started when I served 20 years ago, 10, 10 years ago, excuse me, and the current commission Brunson was on, was to complete sidewalks from the beach to the west side of the island, and they've been doing that down Demery Road, East Beach Causeway, and the last little leg to connect to Gas Going Bluff is Hamilton Road. There's some businesses, a new storage facility is built, of course, the residential housing there, Mariners Cove and condos there, has now produced heavy demand for bike and walking traffic. So, there's a small ditch that would be piped, it's a standing ditch, and that gets rid of that mosquito trap, and we would put the sidewalk over that, and that would complete the connection from East Beach on the east side of the island all the way to the west side of the island. East Beach Causeway, that's the sidewalk, I don't know if you can tell, it's kind of been added to and added to, and now it's really broken apart. It's very heavily used, and a lot of bike traffic, a lot of walking traffic, and so I've asked staff to, and my, you know, and I say asking staff, for them to put the project together so that my fellow Commissioners will take a look at considering these proposed projects from District Two. But the goal is to resurface that and widen it a little bit more to provide for bike and the extensive amount of walking traffic on that route. Okay? Demery Road drainage, we have a lot of problem on Demery Road. Again, open ditches, you know, we're a low-lying island, face it, there's not a lot of great runoff you can do, and if you have full moon tides or new to, new moon tides and a lot of rain, hurricane weather, tropical storms, these ditches fill up, these open ditches. So, the goal is to pipe this ditch and look at some areas where we can widen. This end of Demery Road is widened, and of course, traffic gets jammed up even coming into the roundabout, but we're looking at mainly drainage and widening improvements there and looking at the sidewalks. There's, right north of Waffle House, there's new development coming in. Just north of that, there's a whole new dense, dense multi-housey family unit coming in. So, there's, again, going to be a lot of growth on that road. It's already permitted, not the one next to Waffle House, but the other housing project is all underway, and most of you ride by, you don't know, of course, there's Brockington and all the subdivisions back in there, a lot of young kids and families, and some other condominium projects that are set back off the road that unless you drive back in there, you wouldn't know. So, it's a very heavily densely populated young family area, so we're looking to improve drainage and roads and sidewalks and safety down that stretch. Alright, one of the projects that has been in the public, and that, of course, is the gateway to the island. As you know, the existing gateway project, everybody comes in on the island, two lanes, you can zoom on down to the village, everybody else pulls up in here, there's a stop sign here. Everybody else pulls up in here, there's a stop sign here. It's a gauntlet, I call the gauntlet of death to run. If you're trying to get off the island, you got a crossover. Coming out of here the same way, we have this road over here, some other crossover. So a lot of people try to cross over and then you have left-hand turning traffic. So we, initially, the commission tasked local engineering firm, firm G W E S, to come up with some design ratios and kind of give us the analysis. All of that analysis came back as very poor improvements. We felt it needed a more larger firm look that had a lot of experience doing roundabouts around the state and the country. We contracted with Kimberly Horn and they came in and presented a lot of roundabout options for this intersection. But the truth is, whatever you like with this component, this came up designed to be the best rated efficiency for the next twenty years. There's a component that you may have not caught on with the town conversations that we were having. This is an overpass recommendation. People go, oh my God, we don't want St. Simon's to look like that. Okay, well, I think that's something we have to come face-to-face with. All I can tell you is that's not an uncommon thing. Every day people drive over the community road overpass where the railroad tracks are. Measured-wise, that's about the same size. So when you drive over that overpass, start looking at it. The very, if we don't do an overpass, we're not going to get the efficiency of rating that we want. But we've got traffic plans and a roundabout in there. And of course, we would turn this road back to single-lane traffic coming here. You can see this coming in here, the road traffic inbound would have the option to split because as you know, instead of coming down here and going up here, you would come in here and go north or continue on to Demery or coming off the island. Their last presentation to us a couple of weeks ago was this is the recommended best efficiency. The commission, I've asked them to include this project in SPOLOST and to begin working on those numbers of what that would take, plus or minus. The incremental can be done in the future, but it'll cost more to go back in and disrupt this once it goes. So this community got a grapple with a plan and what we're going to do. Of course, you can do what I always say, option D or F, I call it, is do nothing. And this continues to be a mess. So that's the overview of that. And here's the roundabout without the overpass. This project will be a tough project. There are wetlands here, there are wetlands here, and there are wetlands here, and wetlands here. That means bring the Corps of Engineers in and the DNR. I have to say that it's a credit to the state and the DNR on all of our wetland projects, not only on St. Simon's but in the county. They've been very helpful and very good. It's a bureaucratic process. But I have to say that the Corps of Engineers, being a federal agency under Biden, has stiffened their approvals and application and reviews of process. They're also short-staffed. It's also become more expensive to engage in a project where you have to compensate for wetlands with the federal government. So this is not an easy project to get done. But this is the project that we're, I'm recommending that my commissioners put in SPOLOST, budget money for SPOLOST. As you know.
What's the timeline for that estimating, more or less?
Don't have it right now. That, we have asked Kimberly Horn to go back and kind of give us a time lapse of what we're doing.
How much was this going to cost? What, what price were you?
We're, I'm asking them to set aside probably about twelve million.
Twelve million?
Twelve million.
Thank you.
But again, Kimberly Horn is going back to begin to take those costs low.
Is the flyway the full line?
No, too lane, just like community road.
Was it directed or?
No, it's to carry road, traffic off of Demery. It's right over Demery and allow free flow through going north.
So oncoming traffic would come over the flyway instead of coming down?
Pardon? Oncoming traffic into the island? Will come in to, to the circle. They'll still come by yacht, yacht club, but they'll be on the road offset to give yacht club people a better chance of getting in and out of that side of the area. Okay. All right, this we've got in the slide variation. Another sidewalk would be 12th Street to Ocean Boulevard, if you don't recognize this. Ocean Boulevard is up here, the RR District, which is the most heavily rented and residential resort vacation district we have, is all this way. And today, with parking problems in the pier, people walk. If you go down there, any evening, people walking down to the, they're walking up here, they're coming right down Demery Road and really bothering. And I had, first thing I did was had Public Works cut the bushes back here because you couldn't even see them. We had almost a lot of near collisions of people coming around high oleander bushes and running into a car coming this way. So we're, there is enough room in our right-of-way to put a sidewalk and get safely people down to where they cross over to the lighthouse and go on down or continue down in front of the St. Simon's Inn and Ocean Inn and suite. So that's a safety function there for us. And that's, that's not going to dissipate, you know. A lot of these activities we're talking about now that are plaguing us, St. Simon's going to continue to grow. I say it all the time, I've had the privilege to travel up and down the east coast, I hadn't done too much west of I-95 and I know the waterfront communities. All right, drainage, a big problem we have in, on Delagoal Street in King's Terrace is ditches and downflow. This is the lowest part, so everything rose down here. It's an open ditch, again, because there's not much elevation, these go out here, Ashantilly and then out by the golf course and then into Sea Island Golf Course and out to Dunbar Creek. This gets jammed up all the time because it's a low ditch, it's not, it's open, a lot of leaves. Everything washes from the neighborhood, almost from Sandcastle down to here. So I've asked the engineers, the county, to look at ditching that. And that's one of my project recommendations for them to get the cost analysis on.
Orientation is King's Way to the left out of, out of the picture?
Yes, King's Way is right down over here. All right, cross drains, another problem we have, again, is old drains that are wearing out, that have been there. So there's a lot of projects on Ocean Road and we need tide gates and better drainage to drain all of this area in here out and to stop flooding coming in on these enormous tide dimes. You already know, on our extra full moon, high tide or hurricane-type wind tides, the water's coming off of East Beach and pushing all the way into Crab Trap and into the neighborhoods down here. So this, this is East Beach, down Ocean Boulevard, all the way down to Arnold Road to, we put some new ones in, but we've got a lot of them that are still failing and blocking the drainage job. Okay, a project that you may or may not be aware of, I think most people are. The federal government, under the disaster mitigation funds and other funds, provided a replenishment of rock walls, elevation that had degraded and sumped and been wore down. I grew up on the beach just down west of the pier. And as a kid growing up, I could run from my front yard down to the sandy beach, sort of like East Beach. And Hurricane Doris carved that out, thirteen feet of elevation, all the way down from the Sea Island Golf Course, right down here and all the way around to about Fifth Street, I think, on East Beach. President Johnson came down in sixty-four and wrote it and he authorized funding, bring in granite rocks from Tacoa and stabilize our shoreline wall. Recently, in Brunson's and Peter Murphy's commission group, they got funding approved in the grants match where the federal government came in and elevated the rocks. Good example of our lighthouse group is here. Sherri, without that wall being bolstered up, the ocean was pushing in towards the, the lighthouse pretty seriously unabated. That was a low spot where those rocks had settled, so they put in rock. But they did it only in front of public-owned properties, which left all the other private properties to their own expense or dealing with a lower wall. Well, the federal government has come back and said, we realize you need to do more. If you apply for the funding, we'll look at and match the dollars. We'll look at doing the whole wall all the way around to protect, protect the island. So I've asked the staff to begin looking at what that dollar match needs to be to do that, to fill those gaps. So that water's not coming up and through into our yards and houses and roads, especially all that areas, west of the pier is very low-lying. So that's what that picture represents, the old view on top of it. And every private home I go by every day in my boat, you can easily see the dip in the rocks where we had outfalls and anything like that is bolstered, but everybody else is low and vulnerable, which means not only those property owners, but everybody behind them. Okay. All right, so one of the big projects, Sherri and Duane are here and CBB group, they're down at a convention, I'd asked them to come. You know, before I came on board, again, Brunson and Peter and Work Sher, they put a master plan together for the Coast Guard Park that was to be funded. And then two thousand sixteen hit and COVID hit and they were unsure fiscally what might be happening. The county government put a freeze on hiring for two years, which we just unlocked here this last year. And so that project kind of sat on, on the shelf, so to speak. When Walter and I came on and Dave, with David O'Quinn, the other at-large, we all met with them, got brought up to speed with that plan. We talked about putting it out and the funding sources. Back before that, at the time financially, the CBB and the lighthouse and other groups felt empowered financially, but with COVID in the onset, just like we were as business people and citizens, we were a little more careful financially during those years. So that project kind of moved off the shelf. I'm interested in putting that back up, but in lieu of it, there's some things that we moved ahead that I did immediately when I came on the commission. One was the surf sailors had fallen out of the way and had no lease. There was no lease, it was, went mull and void. I asked my fellow commissioners and met with the surf sailors to agree to a two-year lease. So we're approaching that, that turn now into that second year. And I said, let, give us a couple of years here and let's see. But I want to be clear, master plan or no master plan, you will be moving off of this parcel and over to this site in some location. And the surf sailors have, and I have several meetings on that, and they agreed to that. So they, at some point, no matter the outcome of improvements for Coast Guard Park, one of those improvements will be moving them and over there. And I told them, after walking through that part, their group extensively and their inventory that stores in there, it's a fifteen hundred dollar a month lease that, and, and they were charging their tenants for. Most of it, I'm, I, you know, I operate marinas, so I know I accumulate a lot, most of these are unactive boats. They're storage boats. They're not being used, they're not going out to the beach. I grew up learning to sail on the beach. David O'Quinn was my neighbors, Scarlett's, Akins', we all learned to sail off the beach. I love that the high schools started sailing for them. I want kids to be able to get out in the water. I want people to learn how to sail when they come here. So I encourage the surf sailors to invest in the club boats that they can rent, and they're doing that and increasing the size of that fleet. And people that are not using the boat, anyway, their capacities will be diminished. This is land trust and drainage easement here. Another part of this problem is we have volleyball courts out here. Sherri and them have done a great job with the museum. And we have some ingress and egress problems for motor coach buses, of which that business I'm very familiar of, getting in and out of this parking lot when this parking lot is full. So running drainage out across the street over here to help the drainage in this park, relocating the volleyball court out here to the front. We did talk, this is known as the Bruce Track and the county owns clear, fee simple because of the Supreme Court usable land here. We met with Corps of Engineers and the DNR about the use of that land. We got permission, we were talking about maybe moving the sailboats over here. We got permission from the DNR to, to greenlight that project. But the Corps of Engineers said, not right now, we've frozen permits for that type of application. So that doesn't mean this property couldn't be used adjacent to here. So those discussions are still ongoing. So the plan and my proposal is on the next page, is a frontage boardwalk. I had the great privilege of being a part of the total renovation of Neptune Park when I served last time. And we completed the sidewalk on the front from the pier down to the lighthouse and widened it, as we did many things, tearing down the old building there. And the Neptune Park walkway in the pier with our growth is overrun. And I'm looking at fifteen to twenty years, where are people going to do, what are they going to do? They're coming, whether they're driving in for the day, driving in to rental place, they're going to be coming here. You people out here, I see a lot of you out there walking the beaches, walking Neptune Park, it gets crowded. Every community I go to on the east coast just about has a boardwalk. In Neptune Park, I challenge you to go down there on a weekend, the pier and our boardwalk are packed, just like our roads. So I had the DNR come out and give me the jurisdiction line. And we got that measured and surveyed out. This project sets forth of the master plan. I've talked with Sherri and them so that you know that this, this, if the master plan comes forth, gets financing and regains track, it will not disrupt. But in the meantime, we're going to move the surf sailors out of this area. I'm proposing we put the boardwalk up because where else do you go to enjoy the winds and the vista at Neptune Park? We don't have frontage at Mallory, at Massengale that much. What we do have is a boardwalk going out. Well, not everybody wants to make the walk out to the beach. People want to come down, picnic, have the breeze, just like they do at the pier, sit out on the pier, sit at Neptune Park, feel the wind, see the view and, and get the experience of that ocean breeze and the vista out there, see the shrimp bugs working. Our community has room and deserves a boardwalk for our local people, for our guests that are coming in. This would be elevated up. We don't have final elevation, this is just the rough draft that I've given to my commissioners to look at and review, and I'm now giving it to the public. It doesn't, again, disrupt any master plan from coming forth. It fits in with the master plan. It would be elevated all of our, of safety, lifeguard, beach safety, everybody, units of. that we have here in ugly tin buildings would go underneath there easily and still have the access out on both sides. I've also talked to the CBB. They have not formally endorsed it, but I met with the board several times. They're excited to help and see this project come forth. So I'm not asking for the full ticket and splosh. I've got about the half price projection, whatever that, we get those numbers back. And looking for the CBB, I have the bed tax to fund the other half of that boardwalk. And they've informally agreed to that partnership.
Are there restrooms out there?
No, our restrooms are right back in here. We didn't set all that in. The existing restrooms are right back in here.
So they would stay?
Yes, until the master plan came. But this is a boardwalk, you can go up, you have benches, you can sit out, shaded areas, you can peep in it, you can walk. The kids love it, the adults, the seniors, this is a handicap ramp coming up so that seniors can get up there and they can enjoy the waterfront that we have. I'm not getting any younger. I hope it will come forth and I can go down there and enjoy it.
Is it wider than the current crossover that goes out to the beach?
It would be, it would be wider than the current walkway. It's wide. Again, this is just a schematic introduction sketch. If I can find consensus within my community, like I have with the CBB and my fellow commissioners, then we can move it forward to in splosh and in.
You haven't mentioned about the stage.
Pardon?
The stage?
Well, a lot of boardwalks I go to, either in front or back, this is like an open area so you can do light concerts out there. Board's just open space for people to pick up, have family gatherings. Whatever we do back here, of course, it's still subject to future plans, but it doesn't interrupt anything that goes on. And I've got a letter, the person's in the crowd here who's concerned about major concerts or anything like that, that's not what I'm after. If you know the lighthouse, they have light music. We're not trying to compete with the lighthouse. They do a good job down there. But there are other groups, might do some small plays. I mean, this is a very artsy, imaginative, creative community. I think some good things can happen that are not obnoxious. And when I say obnoxious, I don't mind saying, you know how I feel about Frat Beach, that's obnoxious. I think we can have clashes type of anything. But that's, that's my proposal at this time, breaking forth splosh till some movement happens in the master plan.
The price tag?
Pardon?
The price tag?
I'm asking for about a million dollars, million and a half dollars to be matched by the CBB or town halls. Okay? Any questions? All right. That's what I am introducing to my commissioners for consideration in the splosh fact. We're continuing to work on that and getting feedback, but this was specific to District Two. You folks that live here and all that have reached out to me about various issues and my going around, we tried to focus on sidewalks and drainage and, you know, the needful things of everyday life that accommodate residents and visitors alike. So we're going to sit down. Commissioner Wofowski is here, Mr. Brunson's here, our new county manager's here, and we're going to listen to you. I'm just going to ask to keep the dignity and the comments and everything focused on splosh. I am going to have three more town hall meetings where I won't be doing any presentation. We'll listen to what you have to say, whatever the subject is, but hopefully you got to talk about splosh. I think the consensus of the commission is that we would like to see the community embrace and pass a splosh that's worthy of your vote, and that's what I've tried to package here.
Do you have a total cost of just what you're proposing?
I don't at this time. Probably rough twenty million plus or minus in that number, but that's, that's rough.
It's about six fifty. What time do you plan to end this meeting? How long do you have to roll?
I'm going to give thirty minutes. But I'm going to have three more town halls, buddy. This was to provide information, as most of you do, and most of you do. You can email me anytime, day or night. You can call me. I'm hard to reach by phone because I work out on the water, and I'm out on the water since I'm short staff till late in the evenings. These commissioners will tell you very, unfortunately, that when I get back to them and most everybody, it's ten o'clock, eleven o'clock at night, and then I finally got to get to bed. But I do answer, try to answer every email and every phone call back or refer it over to county staff when I know it's outside my scope. Okay?
Good evening, I'm Phil Gray, sir, and I'm from St. Simon's. I have been here four generations, but I served four years on the splosh oversight committee, which is good for a generation or two. And I think a lot about splosh, and I really want to thank you for your presentation today. It gives me a good idea of where we're going, and this is great. I believe in the splosh. Where else can we get discounted projects in a discounted meeting that we're not paying the whole freight? We've got visitor convention bureau, and we have visitors themselves that are paying some share of the cost. So it's a great, great thing. But serving on the splosh committee, I think there's several things that you as commissioners can, can do to enhance the splosh. First of all, I think that each project really needs to be explained and justified of why it's being done. And you've done that tonight informally, is it a presentation? But in a valid initiative or in the run-up to the valid initiative, let's have pretty material, let's have, you know, formal material saying, we need the sidewalk because of this, and we're going to do the boardwalk because of that. Second, I think we need start and completion dates, just so we know when these projects are going to come online, when we're going to benefit from it. I know it's hard to do, and, you know, construction is always delayed and so forth, but I think we need to know start and completion so we have a priority, so we know what the county's priority, everybody's priority.
So I want to comment to that because that, of course, is a constant question and complaint. You have to understand that once the splosh is approved, the following year, we start collecting that money, and you have to have, the money comes in on a month-to-month basis. That's why I have to break out from the County Board of Education. So it's, you have to prioritize the projects, and you have to wait for the money to come in, or you have to choose to bond projects out in advance.
Could we use your reserve to cover the income splosh? It's a pretty, it's a pretty steady stream of money, and I don't think you can take a great risk using the multi-tens of million reserve to start those projects. So I think.
Not arguing, but I'm just saying, a lot of people think, once you approve it, the money's all there. It's not like going to the bank and drawing the grant.
The money's there in the reserve. We shouldn't argue about this. I really want to just skip these ideas.
Go ahead.
But start and completion is really the idea is when's it going to come online? How much of a priority is it? Are sidewalks ahead of the toilets and the dummy park? Third, I think the management needs to be handled by an outside team, an outside firm. Dave and all of you, all the staff on the county are really hard workers, but they've got other jobs, and they have to stretch thin. We need that. I think the money we spend in management, we can save by the economies of scale and getting these. Fourth, I believe that there needs to be a Citizens Overpass Committee that's charged with the responsibility of reporting to you, the commissioners, as well as to the residents. And Jethal Island Authority, the Lord and Sire and City of Brunswick, that it's, you know, where we are and where we're standing. And I think it needs to be independent, and it's a long issue to do that. I think splosh, one last thing, I think if, if, if you, the commissioners, the heads of the Jethal Island Authority, the City of Brunswick adopted these suggestions or some form of these suggestions, I think we'll have a splosh and infrastructure that we can be proud of. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name is Patrick Anderson, homeowner of Coast Cottage Lane, and the head of the manager of the Coast Cottage. On behalf of the forty-four owner families of Coast cottages, we would like to voice our extreme objection to the recently circulated House Guard Beach overlook plan on Tuesday show this, Mr. Benjamin. We have polled our owners who are in general agreement with this follows. The vending plan includes a large performance stage and spacious event lawn that would undoubtedly draw large crowds of people with amplified music and noisy performances. There are two residential neighborhoods within a few hundred feet of the event area, Coast Cottage and East Beach. The quiet enjoyment of these neighborhoods would be significantly diminished by amplified music and other noisy events. The performance stage and event lawn would draw additional crowds of people into a public parking area that already overflows with beach traffic on busy spring and summer weekends. This overflow negatively affects the surrounding residential neighborhoods of East Beach, Coast cottages, and other subdivisions. Beachgoers often park illegally along the marsh, on homeowners' lawns, in private drives, and in parking spaces, private parking spaces. By adding more reasons to visit Coast Guard Park, the commission only exacerbates an already untenable parking situation. The vending plan does not appear to address the inadequacy of the parking lot, which is a dusty, dirty eyesore, unstriped, poorly drained, and very inefficient. Many more cars could be illegally parked there with clean, pervious paving, properly striped for maximum usage. According to OSHA, the dust created by driving over the current mixture of crushed limestone and sand is a known carcinogen. Families are walking through and breathing this toxic dust on a daily basis. A far superior and more comprehensive master plan was developed in recent years by the Coast Guard Park Master Plan Committee with participation from East Beach and Coast Cottage homeowner representatives, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Coastal Georgia Historical Society, and Glen County Government. This master plan has already been vetted and approved by the most affected stakeholders. This master plan increases the number of parking spaces with proper striping, eliminates the toxic dust environment, fixes the poor drainage, adds hundreds of shade trees, enlarges the restroom facility, and adds a lifesaving life better terror to improve beach safety. This comprehensive master plan has already been approved by the Glen County Commission with a six to one vote in favor. And this is the plan that should be moving forward for Coast Guard Park. With record tourism over the past two years and the windfall in lodging taxes collected by Glen County, we're certain our county commission can follow the more comprehensive Coast Guard Park master plan with or without splosh. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioner. First, I would like to make a positive comment. The list that you presented tonight, got a number of projects.
You just state your name.
You were, sorry. Number of projects that look like are doable, et cetera. But I'm not clear as your view of how this fits in with the greater splosh, sort of, I think the courthouse has got tier-one threats associated with it. You say no, but yeah, that's the information I have up until just now. But how does that fit in? Speak for that if you appropriate time, doesn't have to be now. However, my biggest concern about splosh, I did not support the last splosh because one of the deficits that was in that, that I saw in that proposal, it was not clearly managed. And the board of commissioners, granted it was from a previous group of folks, basically told us to shut up and go away. And I'm paraphrasing that, but that's basically what I took away from the public record. That attitude just won't flush. I have not heard or seen anything in this proposal while the projects themselves are commendable, that'd be great, okay? However, the ability to manage those, just hiring an outside manager is not, is not the panacea to solve the problem. He needs to be a professional. I think we've already, I heard we've already got a gentleman on board, at least one, but he needs to be given his head to do what he is hired to do as opposed to being, have an oversight, particularly with the commissioner or commissioners in his back pocket all day long, okay? He ought to be set up as a department head or equivalent and given the authority to execute that, and he needs to be in the scoping of the projects. My lifeblood was multi-million and billion-dollar projects, and our successful projects were where the project managers and the folks that were charged had to look to the board of directors for incoming returns. The successful projects on a monetary basis, on a schedule basis, on any measure that you got, were more successful when the project manager was brought on in the conceptualizing and bid stage. The later it comes on, not to say that we didn't have successful projects, the less the probability of success went down dramatically, and we had some finite data to prove that. So I would strongly encourage that if it's not part of the splosh referendum itself, that there be some language that has some teeth in it to say how it's going to be managed. The splosh oversight is okay, okay? If it's structured correctly and not having too much oversight, with all due respect, Mr. Wofowski, putting a commissioner on that committee is not, in my opinion, the way to do it. Certainly, you know, listen in and whatever, but that citizens group, if you choose to go down that path as one of the oversights, needs to be given as much independence as possible. You certainly have the ability to overrule what they say, as long as you're overruling and have some merit to it, okay? And explain. The last time we got overruled, didn't flush from me, gentlemen. It really, pardon my language, pissed me off, and I wasn't part of the splosh oversight, all right? So I would strongly recommend that you at least give that strong consideration in sales pitch. If you go and look at the various listings, the things that were attributed to the failure of the last splosh, management or lack of the management of the previous splosh was a, an input, one of the reasons for failure. One of the reasons I didn't go for it, you didn't have the visibility for the last splosh. Okay? And I am concerned that while I understand splosh and some of the things you have here now are very early in their genesis and the process, I watched it, I went back and rewatched the special call meeting for the roundabout, the, see, I'm roundabout. I was appalled to listen to the benefit of how we put this, six million off in the budget for two thousand twenty-three. Started at two million, somebody said four million, had two votes for five million, one guy said six million, and we came up with a consensus that I never saw. Gentlemen, that just, just doesn't strike me, and it gives me the confidence that our leadership has got a hand on how to budget, even in the conceptual stage. And there's a ton of regulations, regulations for a ton, best practices out there on the street. Yes, they're in the business world, not necessarily in the government world, but I would strongly suggest to go take a look at those and implement them as opposed to, wow, what looks good, feels good, smells good. Certainly, experience is a good thing to put into it, but that was, to me, was a very shattered piece. And oh, by the way, that meeting for transparency on the roundabout didn't cater for me, okay?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Can I chime in? There are no plans to have courthouse on the splosh. Those funds will be taken out of the capital project fund, undesignated fund balance for the juvenile court because it is such a critical element of our court system that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
Appreciate the answer, but has that been clearly communicated in public space?
I just did it best I could right now.
Well, okay. Apparently, it's been known for a while.
Well, the commissioners are, just like I'm doing, putting their projects together, tossing them back and forth between us. You know, I, I came on pretty envisioned on what I wanted to see happen, so I've had my list ready for a while, but we bounced back and forth. The process is going good within. I'm very excited, and I refer back to our new manager here. Here's the guy that was out at Flexen. He knows about increasing infrastructure, budgets, and contractors, and I'm sure we'll be listening to his guidance and have been already on trying to get this forward. I felt it was time for me, just, I'm talking me personally and not saying anything on the other commissioners, it was time for me personally. Y'all are a very active, engaging crowd, my district is. Y'all are a very active, engaging crowd, my district is. I wanted to get some things out ahead on what I was looking at and start getting the feedback. And we're going to do the same as this process evolves.
Mr. Bork, one other thing, you talked about the roundabout, and we go from 2.8 million to 6 million. The 2.8 didn't include any right-of-way acquisition, didn't include any sewer, any utilities. I mean, we're obviously, if it doesn't cost that much, we'll put that money back in the reserves, but we felt like we needed it. And I don't know of anybody that could estimate the cost of a roundabout today or a set of tires that you're going to buy two weeks from now.
You got to a big number with a very sketchy.
Okay, let, let Commissioner answer, and then we'll keep.
Well, you know, we, we did not vote on that in that executive session. We voted on it the night you were at the county commission meeting, and so there was no backdoor deal done there whatsoever.
Didn't say that. Methodology didn't do the number.
Okay. Sherri.
My name is Sherri.
Yes, announce who you are.
I'm Sherri Jones, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Coastal Georgia Historical Society, who was a, I co-chair the master plan committee for Coast Guard Beach Park, the master planning process, and we're a partner there, and a stakeholder of the site, as you mentioned in your presentation. We stand with Patrick and Coast cottages in support of the Coast Guard Beach master plan. I do want to say congratulations on the gateway entrance to St. Simon's that you presented this evening. It was visionary and looked like a plan that is preparing our community for the future. I also noticed that you, in developing that plan, engaged not only a regular team of consultants, but an even higher level team of consultants to advise you through that process. So I really urge the commission to do the same thing, adopt the same approach to the Coast Guard Beach Park. It is a very complicated site. It's the primary public beach access for our county, and there are a lot of challenges there that diminish our quality of life, including public safety. The master plan, the Coast Guard Beach Park master plan committee hired experts, transportation engineers, civil engineers, environmental specialists, landscape architects, to put together this plan. It was led by stakeholders and community organizations, and it relied heavily on listening sessions and surveys with our residents. The county staff and leadership was very involved in the process and provided valuable input. And as was mentioned earlier, that plan was approved by the county commission in May 2018. The master plan addresses major challenges that I mentioned a minute ago at our county's primary public beach, and they include parking, beach safety, flooding, environmental issues, insufficient public facilities, a great need for shade and beautification. Implementation of that master plan prepares Glen County for the future and creates a better and safer place for us all to live. The boardwalk and concert venue proposed this evening will not address any of these issues. In fact, it will certainly make matters worse. We appeal to the commission to fund the approved master plan. We had an update, I worked with the landscape and the master planning architects over Christmas to get a current cost for the project, because we all know that prices have been increasing. The current cost of the project is $6 million, and the county fortunately right now has many different funding options at their disposal, and we appeal to you to use one of them to do a project that will enhance the quality of life for all residents of Glen County. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will, I will make sure you send a letter to the commission, again, remind them of that, and also to Coast cottages to continue to weigh in and support.
My name is Jeff Kilbar. I have cautioned this board more than once about planning SPOLOST, and particularly, I attended the session that you had with your consultant, who encouraged you to expand your SPOLOST list beyond what your forecast revenue was, which I thought was ludicrous. I think it's almost ludicrous now to be talking about a SPOLOST, particularly as Mr. Brunson has just related, you can't budget a pair of tires, set of tires, in this economy, and most economic experts are predicting a severe recession that will go into the end of this year and extend all the way to 2023. If you fall short on your revenue, as I'm sure you know, under the SPOLOST law, you're obligated to complete all the projects. These projects, what you put forward tonight, generally strike me as projects that are, almost every one of them, prompted because of growth and expansion, and there was a flicker of hope a couple of years ago when the board approved a contract with an expert consultant out of Atlanta on impact fees. And he came down and you pay him $200,000. He prepared a plan and a means for you to implement impact fees. I fail to see why you're here tonight asking all these taxpayers to fund improvements that are required because developers are going to get rich buying and selling and constructing new homes, new rental homes, and in the meantime, we're all inconvenienced with increased traffic, and we're having to pay to accommodate all these people. I don't understand why this board of commissioners has not properly considered the issue of impact fees so that the costs that you're talking about here tonight would be passed on to the builders, developers, the people who are property, and the folks who buy those homes. And the cost would be passed on to the folks who come here, rather than those of us who are here funding the improvements to accommodate the new folks. I would encourage you to look hard at your single hall, single sink, I presume, restroom. The last one that Glen County built was in Park. It cost $93,000 for one toilet, one sink, and $53,000 to install. I encourage you also to follow through on your word. I have your email here and your commitment that there will be a public hearing on the roundabout. Thank you.
I'm Jordan Smith, I live on the island. Thank you, Commissioner Fendig, for telling us, giving us an estimate of $12 million for the combination of a roundabout at Sea Island and Derry Roads and a flyover or an overpass. That overpass, if it gets built, sounds like a good place for people to take refuge when the tourist causeway floods, so you sit in their car up above the flood.
Happened in New Orleans.
I'm sorry?
Happened in New Orleans.
Now, earlier this year, the county wasted money on a community sentiment survey, very poorly done, very Mickey Mouse, that the person who designed it explained was a random sample of convenience, which means it was convenient for people who wanted to have certain projects, have their friends and their employees and their customers and their neighbors do the survey, which is why very few African-Americans took it, I think, less than 5%. Most of the surveys were 95% or so, were returned by white folks. And it's the, the poor blacks and the poor whites who suffer the most from a regressive one-sided sales tax to give us all kinds of fancy things here on the island. One of the problems with that community sentiment survey was that there was no description of what kind of traffic improvements were being talked about. It was just traffic improvements, road paving and traffic improvements. If you want to improve traffic, blow off the bridges to St. Simon's so people have to come on a ferry, that might slow things down, might slow down development and so on. I'm not suggesting that terrorists do this, of course. No. If you build a roundabout and are a overpass, you're just inviting more traffic. You're not going to improve traffic. You're going to make some traffic, some parts of the day, move faster. And of course, we're going to have several years of disruption, as this has been shown. So I would like to ask the people here, most of whom live on St. Simon's, how many of you really want to spend $12 million for these so-called traffic improvements at that intersection, a roundabout and a flyover? How many of you want to do that? And how many of you don't want to do that? It's, I'm sworn to the devil, and a lot of people don't want their neighbors to know which side they're on. Listen, thank you for this opportunity, and I hope this will continue in the same spirit, but with less presentation like these.
Amen.
Time for the follow-up. Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you. My name is Gary Nigakary. I live off of East Beach Causeway in South Point. Also own a coast cottage that backs up to the Coast Guard Park. And my wife and I manage nine coast cottages, which most of them also back up to the park. I can tell you that we are not in favor of any kind of venue or performances in the park. We're all for the master plan, for improving the park, improving the parking, and getting people to the beach. We don't want congregations in the parking area or behind the coast cottages as such. So master plan, yes. Boardwalk and stage, definite no. One other thing for parks department, kind of minor, no one touches on, tennis and pickleball. I'm a diehard tennis player like Patrick, and there's a big group of us. We're not real friendly with the pickleball players, but understand pickleball is growing, and we're all for pickleball expansion. I would say instead of tennis expansion, I would be for lighting at Fworth. And I know there's a problem with the surrounding neighborhood, but you know, technology has changed over the years. There's low light or low bleed lighting. We'd get far more usage of tennis courts if we had the back courts lit, and that would probably be cheaper than expanding and building more tennis courts on the island. Lastly, as far as growth, I'm not for no growth, but why do we have to continue to have multifamily housing built on the island? Have a single-family housing only, yes? We don't need more condos, we don't need more apartments. That's just my St. Simon's. Thank you.
No, thank you.
Mike Benutili, good evening, sir. Thank you very much. I appreciate the governor giving all the time and effort that you put into our county. Two, two real easy comments. One is just a request, and I was excited to see more sidewalks. Those sidewalks plus the ones we have, could somebody put an asterisk somewhere that we just keep up repairing the sidewalks? Just, I just want to go down and see the new road, how they had finished and stuff down by Christchurch. And my wife and I just took a drive from Seapalm West on the bikes down there, and quite a bit of the ways, I'm saying, I'm going to come back with clippers, and I'll take that so they don't hit us in the face and that kind of, it's just simple, something simple like that. I just wanted to put it out there as a reminder.
I'll take that one. That's mine.
Sir, thank you. I appreciate it. And then the other one, I'm an 18, 18-year taxpayer resident here, and I love the beach, and I love what we do in terms of getting people to come here, and sometimes I feel a little begrudged about our tax dollars with the showers and this and that, but I've come to, to understand the importance of it. But I just came across an interesting concept last week in a beautiful community on the Gulf. Well, they have 23, and I'm not talking about all of our access points, but just where we have parking. They have 23 access points, and they have parking at every place. But what they have is they have free public parking, they have the blue accessible parking, and then for the locals at no charge to their county government, they have permit parking. So that I would go, show my license, my, my wife and I, our household, anyone's household, get one permit parking sticker for our car. And so then when we go to the beach, that way there, I don't have to go to the beach at eight o'clock on a Saturday morning in order to get a parking space, either blue or something close, that we don't have to walk a half a mile or so. And I just want to throw that out, because I did a lot, a couple of years back with David O'Quinn, we got talking about the paid parking, and I had done some research for him from Maine down to Florida and on the California coast, all different beach communities and things that I had experienced in terms of cost and that kind of thing. And it just seemed to fall on, just kind of like, it wasn't, it wasn't going to go forward in terms of the paid part of it. Like I said last week, I came across this concept, and I said, wow, if I had a chance to give you a call or, well, to say, hey, this is something I came across, and if you just consider it, it won't cost us any money, just a, just a decal. The cost of a decal, you go down, you pick it up in Parks and Rec, each household, they have it on the computer, and then you go there, and you have like a certain amount of parking spaces over, over at Massagale, let's say, permit parking only. And so that the tax, the tax-paying residents can come and have a shot at getting a parking space. And once again, thank you very much for all the governance that you do, of course. Appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Caesar Rodriguez. I live on East Beach. And just a couple of initial comments about the flyover. Number one, if it's going to be designed like it, a bridge over one of our expressways, I'd certainly oppose it. If it's, is going to look more like a bridge over a bike path or a golf path with some design elements to its architectural designs and plannings and other things, I might be more, I might approve something like that. The other, the other major global point for me is, every project that the county undertakes ought to have a landscape component. Everything, I mean, the, the roundabout at East Beach with 40 signs is not a landscape, you know, component. And I think that if we're doing a bridge, if we're doing a building, if we're doing a, a bike path, whatever it is, or at intersections, we ought to have something in the, in the SPOLOST itself, and it never seems that we have any money left to do any landscaping on any project. If you go down the roadway where the, the, all the hangers are located, and you see the, what the airport authority has done with their properties, and then we look at our fire station, it's like a blight on the area. I mean, it's poorly landscaped, there's no landscaping really to speak of. That's my global, those are my global areas. I did have the honor of serving on the Comprehensive Plan Commission Tree Ordinance Board, Tree Ordinance Group, where we've spent three years trying to get a tree ordinance approved, and also the Tree Board. I've also served as the president of the East Beach Association. And I haven't, we haven't had an opportunity to poll our group regarding the proposed boardwalk, but I will say this, based on my experience of boardwalks, I'm a Yankee, grew up in New Jersey, Atlantic City and, and Coney Island, and I've been down in the south now 60 years, so I'm almost a native. But I hope that's not what we envision there. I wouldn't, I wouldn't, not personally, I would not like to see the boardwalk developed. We, we have a beach week at East Beach four times a year, we also clean up the marsh. The little boardwalk we have over to the beach is, is the worst place for us. We can hardly get in the bushes to clean out the debris and garbage that accumulates there. And I see that, that boardwalk is on frat beach weekend with the tide coming in, taking all of the litter and burying it under the boardwalk, and nobody will ever clean it up. Because if you, if you walk along the sidewalk on East Beach, down to the beach, and you look on the left, there must be 10,000 cans and beer cans over there that have never been cleaned up. that have never been cleaned up. And I don't have a lot of confidence in the ability of the county to maintain that boardwalk properly. The other thing that concerns me about the boardwalk, we want to allow the sale of any, you know, we do have carpentry on the beach that sell drinks, I think, during the summer. Is there any intention to put something like that on the boardwalk to allow that kind of activity to be conducted on the boardwalk? I would, I would certainly not be in favor of that. If you walk through the village, the sidewalks most of the time are filthy. And in front of the, particularly in front of the ice cream shop, I love to go there. But nobody ever pressure washes the sidewalks. They always look like a mess behind the, the.
We did, we did pressure wash those. We did, Caesar, we pressure washed those, didn't do a damn thing. I mean, turn it from a shade of dark gray to a shade of light gray.
Well, we had this discussion, you and I did several years ago about the casino.
And I pressure washed that too.
Only after I came and met with you.
I know, I know, and I pressure washed that, it didn't make much difference there either. We have pressure washed, I spent $3,000 pressure washing all the sidewalks in the village and it was $3,000 right out the window, I think.
Let him go ahead and finish, finish this comment.
In any event.
Has been done.
Well, I'm not precise to you, but I'm just saying.
Sounded like it.
Caesar. Caesar, we got a few minutes left and another person behind you.
All right. Well, I apologize. But in any event, I haven't pulled the East Beach Association, but I certainly anticipate that they will not be in favor of creating a boardwalk in front of the beach. Thank you.
Commissioners, good evening. My name is Bill Jarischek, I live in the Harrington area. My basic question is, there are several types of taxes that are out there and I recently learned about, there's some percentage of the groceries that are bought at the county. We get a percentage of that. There's the property taxes, there's, there's of course a percentage of gas taxes and things like that. What is the real need for the SPOLOST if we've got all this money coming into the county that we have to pay more taxes or get taxed here?
I'll leave you my card and email address and I'll send you a variety of reports that we get and send them to you, at least so you can see where funds are going and how they're used.
The SPOLOST is designed for large capital projects like a courthouse or like a east SPOLOST for a school that just can't be budgeted. There's not enough, there's not enough funds and not enough resources, there's not enough of those taxes that you get, say are coming from all directions to fund a capital project of, you know, multi-million dollar magnitude. And so that is what the SPOLOST is designed to do. And the beauty of it is living in a resort community with visitors coming, using our roads, flushing our toilets, using our sewage treatment plant. They participate in the process, in that, in that process of running sewer lines and those things that just are millions and millions of dollars. Drainage projects that are millions of dollars that just absolutely cannot be budgeted in the normal course of, of business, so.
Well, I do thank you for your time and having such a presentation.
Yes, sir, thank you. Okay, well, we've arrived at that time. So if you have your sheets and you've written in them, you can put them up here on the front tables as you leave and I'll be following back up with the report on those. Again, you can email me as your District Two Commissioner anytime. That's the best way to reach them. Thank you for coming tonight and appreciate the feedback.